I call to order the Gladstone City Council's special meeting and work session for February 23rd, 2021 at 6:31 PM. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. The meeting will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. The special meeting is a public hearing and will allow comment. However, you needed to submit your name and topic prior to noon today to be recognized. The work session is a time for the council and staff to discuss matters openly and informally, and public comment is not a part of our agenda and is not allowed. The city upgraded its Zoom software so it allows us to easily conduct events with a simpler interface in a professional setting. There are two groups of participants, panelists and attendees. Panelists are those you will see on the platform such as elected officials, the city administrator, city attorney, and any staff or person making a presentation. Attendees are those in the audience. Attendees will still be able to speak for three minutes during the public hearing part of our meeting if they submitted their request to speak before noon today. We will not have a consent agenda, business from the audience, nor business from the council. The only items to be discussed are those on this agenda. Additionally, if members of the public become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference. If that fails to stop the disruption, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the next council agenda. Tonight, our special meeting has discussed the following items. One, a public hearing regarding Gladstone's housing needs analysis for 2021 to 2041, and the city of Gladstone community engagement strategy for the housing code project. We will then adjourn into a work session to have a discussion regarding proposed amendments to the Gladstone Municipal Code 9.49, city parks and property exclusion, and Gladstone Municipal Code 9.60 camping prohibited. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Here.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stimple.
Here. Thank you. We'll start with the flag salute. I think in the city council room, there's an American flag there. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. But thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections? Jackie?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Given the recent ice storm event that Gladstone experienced, I would like to just add one item to the agenda before you adjourn into a work session so it becomes the new number three to talk about a potential partnership with Clackamas County for debris removal.
All righty, and that's time sensitive, obviously.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, so because this is a special public hearing instead of a regular council meeting, I will have staff recognize those individually that have signed up to speak after the presentation has been concluded. For those that are participating, thank you very much for being here this evening. For the counselors, I will call on each of you individually to ensure that all of you have an opportunity to comment. So because this is a public hearing, the only script that I have is a quasi judicial script from Planning Commission, which isn't really appropriate, but I'm going to try and pick out the pieces that work for this. So I'm going to open the public hearing for the Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis 2021 to 2041. The city council will conduct a public hearing on the Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis. It is February 23rd, 2021 at 6:36 PM. Are there any counselors that would like to abstain from hearing this item? I don't see anybody. Are there any conflicts of interest in hearing this item? I don't see any. Has there been any ex parte contact made from a council member regarding this topic? And I'm going to call on you individually for this one because this is important that we have it on the record. Counselor Ripley, any ex parte contact?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
Not to my knowledge.
Counselor Garlington?
No, not to my knowledge.
Counselor Hartman?
No, not to my knowledge.
Counselor Todd?
No.
Counselor Alexander?
No.
And I have had none. So for those in the attendees, if you would like to bring a challenge, if you're participating online and you would like to challenge this body, raise, use your raise the hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. And if you're via telephone, dial star nine, which is your raise your hand function, and you'll be recognized at the appropriate time. Let's see. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial hearing, state law grants any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designated respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated respond to the issue recludes any action for damages in circuit court. I know a lot of that doesn't sound like it's applicable, but it still needs to be said. So we'll start with staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, good evening. What is Gladstone's housing needs for the next 20 years? That's what you're going to learn about tonight. A lot of time and work has gone into preparing this document. We thank the Planning Commission for all of their efforts. And tonight, we have our consultant, John Southgate, that is going to introduce our Echo Northwest staff tonight, who is going to present you with the housing needs analysis for the next 20 years. So with that, I will let John go ahead and take over.
Great. Thank you, Jackie. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, this is really a momentous occasion for Gladstone. Some of you have probably heard me enough times you can do my speech. But the last several years have been really important years for the city of Gladstone on its housing agenda and creating more housing choice, especially for affordable housing and workforce housing, housing for families, housing for seniors. You have adopted, or former councils have adopted, several very critical policy documents. We'll probably talk about them a little bit later tonight, but those include the downtown revitalization strategy from 2017, the housing code audit from 2019. On top of that, as you probably all know, the state legislature in 2019 passed HB, House Bill 2001. All of these are about creating more housing choice. An important element of this discussion, and before we embark on actually modifying the code to align with the policy decisions that you all have made over the last several years, is a housing needs analysis. And I'll let Beth get into that a little more detail. But this, I want to acknowledge that the Department of Land Conservation and Development, the LCD, funded this study for us as well as the community engagement strategy that I'll talk about a little bit later in the agenda. So the state and the region and the county have been alongside us these last several years in moving forward on this very important housing agenda. I think that's all I need to say to tee this off. Beth Goodman, I guess I will introduce Beth. I work with Beth over the last several years. She's probably the state's expert on housing needs analysis. This is a state mandate. Every community needs to have a housing needs analysis. Beth has probably done more than anyone else. And really, we are, Gladstone is lucky to have her working on this. So with that, now that I've embarrassed her a little bit, I'd like to turn it over to Beth.
Well, thank you so much, and I'm very glad to be here this evening. I'm going to attempt to start sharing my screen and get everybody's faces still on here. So thank you for having me here tonight. We're talking about the draft housing needs analysis for Gladstone. We'll be talking about some demographics and some housing trends that are from the housing needs analysis. That document is about 90 pages long. I'm sure if anybody read it, it was so exciting that it kept them awake at night reading it. So this will be a summary. We'll look at key findings about your residential land supply, your forecast for new housing, and the sufficiency of residential land. Then I think I'll hand it back over to John and Jackie to talk about next steps. So you might ask yourself, why is Gladstone doing a housing needs analysis? Well, John just laid the groundwork better than I could about all the other work that Gladstone has been doing. And so the housing needs analysis takes that work, looks over the long term, over the next 20 years, and says essentially, what's Gladstone's housing need? You're complying with statewide planning goal 10. You're also setting yourself up to comply with House Bill 2003, which requires cities to adopt, develop and adopt a housing strategy after they've developed and adopted a housing needs analysis. Stepping away from all of the statewide planning pieces, you're fundamentally asking the question, how much growth will Gladstone be able to accommodate over the next 20 years? Where is Gladstone's buildable residential land? And is there enough of it to accommodate that growth? You guys have a very compact amount of land. And then this leads to discussions of what development patterns make sense. And the work that Jackie and John are working on beyond this project really get to development patterns. So we'll get to that as we go into this a little bit more. May I ask, Madam Mayor, do you prefer that people ask questions as we go along?
Yeah, I think that's probably appropriate on this one.
Perfect. So I'm hoping that somebody will stop me and tell me that they have a question when they have one. So this project in blue is essentially the technical report. It's got information about all of the things in blue there. After that, you're continuing your public discussions. You're looking at updating your comprehensive plan with the housing needs analysis. You can adopt that as an appendix to your comprehensive plan to support future changes to your comprehensive plan, to your zoning code, to your comprehensive plan map, et cetera. You can also use the housing needs analysis for, as the basis for changing housing policies and programs. So as you're developing a housing production strategy, your housing needs analysis is the basis of that. So as we're thinking about what goes into the housing needs analysis, in the back of my mind are all of the things that Oregon requires, both in terms of laws, administrative rules, and the many, many court cases that go into this. I'm trying not to tell you guys a lot about that unless you have questions. So when we think about future housing need, we base it off of a forecast of new housing, new population, which we'll get to in a few minutes. But we also think about the factors that affect housing demand. Those are, generally speaking, the biggest factors are age, age of the adults in the household, household composition, and income. These three factors interact with each other in really predictable ways. So in general, as a person ages, their household composition changes, going from single people to perhaps part of a couple. Some people have children. Some people have several children. Hopefully, their children eventually leave home and form their own households. And then an older couple may have different housing needs than a young couple with children. Income in a household generally increases with age until retirement. And at that point, income generally decreases. So the point of this fairly stereotypical graphic is that as people, their demographics change, as they age, as their household composition changes, their housing needs change, and what housing they can afford changes also. So the next set of information will be peeking in on a little bit of this information from the 90-page report that you have. So looking at population by age group, about 50%, 50% of Gladstone's population is 40 years or older. Gladstone's population in terms of age is really similar to Clackamas County's when you look at the distributions. Clackamas County is expected to have a small increase in population over 60 years old over the next 20 years. It's reasonable to assume that Gladstone will see a small increase also. So where you're looking at future need for housing and how that might change, you'll have continuing aging of the baby boomers. You've got the millennials who are now forming their households or are continuing to form their households. And then you've got the generation behind them, Generation Z, who are just beginning to form their households and will continue to do so over our 20-year period. So these are the groups of people by age. The housing needs of people who are over 65 tend to be that, in general, older people want to stay in their homes, most of them, as long as they can. They want to age in place. If they can't age in place, they're looking at opportunities to age within their community in a lot of cases. So that begs a wider range of housing types, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. When you look at younger folks, the millennials and Gen Z, they're often needing right now affordable housing, especially rental housing. And as they get a little bit older, they'll be looking for affordable homeownership housing. And so you can think of it as if you want your kids to be able to continue to live in Gladstone when they're older, they have to have housing that's affordable to them. Looking at your household composition, what we see is that Gladstone has about 32% of its households in households with families with children. It's a little higher than the regional average. You've got a lot of one- and two-person households, which is consistent with the region, and a little smaller share of households that are one-person households, or sorry, that are non-family households. So that's people who are one-person households or have roommates. Little less common in Gladstone than among the region, but still very common. When you look at household income, median household income in Gladstone is in the lower part of the region of what the cities were comparing it to. If you had a city like Happy Valley on here, Happy Valley's household income would be much higher. So Gladstone's household income is more like Milwaukee's and a little lower than Wilsonville's. So of course, the next important piece is sales price when you look at housing costs. In the middle of last year, when this data is from, housing sales prices averaged about $420,000 per unit. That was an increase since 2016 of about 53%. So housing prices in Gladstone escalated, but they escalated with housing prices among other communities in the Portland region. Housing sales prices in Gladstone are really similar to Milwaukee. It's not very surprising. And they're lower than housing sales prices in places like Oregon City, Wilsonville, and certainly lower than Happy Valley, West Lynn, and Lake Oswego. So essentially, we're looking at a community with lower average income and lower overall housing sales prices. That's not necessarily surprising, given what we know about Gladstone. When we look at rental costs, which we're not showing here, again, rental costs in Gladstone are sort of in the middle of where they are in the region, where they're similar to places like Milwaukee and below places like Happy Valley or Lake Oswego or West Lynn. When you put housing prices, including rents, together with incomes, you get measures of affordability. So in Gladstone, when we look at cost burden, households are cost burdened if they spend 30% or more of their income on housing costs. And so when we look at owner-occupied housing, a little more than 30% of Gladstone's households are cost burdened. When you look at this darker brown area, that's severe cost burden. Those households are spending 50% or more of their incomes on rent, incomes on housing costs, rather. Hopping over to rent, what we see is well over 60% of Gladstone's households are cost burdened with 34% severely cost burdened. And what's going on here is that Gladstone has, it's got lower incomes. The rents aren't a whole lot lower than the regional averages. They're pretty close. But Gladstone is comparatively a little more affordable compared to some of your other communities. And so you've got renters who, many of whom can just barely afford or can't actually afford to live within the Portland region, if we call it metro as the region. And that's why I think cost burden is so high in Gladstone. Severe cost burden, 34% of renters in Gladstone are severely cost burdened. They're paying 50% or more of their income on housing. You can see this is higher rates of cost burden than many of the cities around Gladstone. I would say that a place like Milwaukee is more comparable to Gladstone for cost burden than a place like Lake Oswego. What's going on in the two cities between Lake Oswego and Gladstone are just so fundamentally different. Before I go on and start talking about land, do you have questions about some of the housing market and demographic information that we've gone through?
Counselor Alexander, any questions?
I'm just trying to understand, yeah, need for housing. Need, the need needs to be lower cost. I mean, you can't, there's not a lot of land to put up a lot of houses. And if you do, they're just, you know, nobody's rent ever goes down. Price for houses never go down. How do you meet that demand? And then just keep going up. I mean, I know people that are buying, they come to Gladstone, they look, I talk to them, and they go, I'm just going to go right across Jennings Avenue and save thousands and thousands of dollars buying an unincorporated Gladstone or Clackamas County. So they just bypass Gladstone because it's just not affordable for anybody. So I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. How are we going to make, there's a housing need, but it has to be affordable. You feel the need, you have to be able to afford it. That's all I'm trying to understand.
And so what I will say to you is that part of the work here is characterizing the problem, and then beyond this project is characterizing the solutions. I will acknowledge that these are incredibly difficult problems, intractable problems in a lot of ways, and Gladstone is not the only community who's struggling with them, certainly.
Counselor Todd?
Yeah, so when you say a cost burden and, you know, severely cost burden at 50% of their income, it's not just for the rent and the mortgage payment, correct? Or is that like the full, what it takes to live in a space? Electricity, you know, water sewer, that sort of stuff? Or is it just the actual rents itself?
It's, I won't call it the full what it takes to live in the space, but it's closer to. So it's rent plus selected utilities like water and electricity, but it's not things like cable or a phone. And for homeownership, it's those utilities plus mortgage plus interest plus insurance, homeowners' insurance.
Counselor Hartman?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. The, on the housing affordability impact, the one that you're showing now, what, is it the same 2012 to 2016 timeframe data that your, or does this have any of the last year in terms of COVID and quite a few folks losing their income?
Oh, no, no, no. The sales price data is the most up-to-date of all of this. There is nothing available from the census, which is what this is from, the American Community Survey, that talks about what's going on with COVID. So none of this is better now.
I was, so potentially, it's worse now because incomes are a lot lower. Okay.
And potentially, it will get much worse after the rent moratorium ends.
Okay. And then on slide seven, I was just, I know that you had the data from 2012 to 2016. Is there any, do you have any idea of how different the percentages might be now? Only reason I ask is the cost of living in the Portland region in 2016 and 2012 is, I think, significantly different now, and how many people have moved out to Clackamas County looking for affordable housing? Do you think that there's a big difference possibly for 2021?
No, I really don't think there's a big difference in part because when we look at the comparison between Clackamas County's data and Gladstone's data, they're so similar. Age distribution tends to change very slowly.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. That was it. Thank you so much.
Certainly.
Counselor Ripley? You're muted.
Okay, there we go. I have one question. If you, was that the next? Yes. If you go back to that slide and if you were to add on what people, what city, what the average they're paying in property taxes, if you added another bar on that graph, would, consistent with all the rest of the cities move compared to Gladstone? Would things flip-flop for the height, the high to the lows? Or would it stay consistent? Or have we looked at those taxes to see how much the difference are in everything? Because there's a lot more of the picture than we can see here that affects affordability.
Property tax is figured into cost burden. So all of this is built on the way that people report their information. So I get the census form, I fill it out, and I'm a homeowner. And let's say I happen to be well-informed about what I pay in taxes, and I put that information in there very clearly. But let's say my neighbor doesn't know what they pay in taxes and they misreport it. So the information should include taxes, the exact, precisely correct nature of it. I would say everybody's data is as likely to be as good as anybody else's data. Or as bad.
Would it be able to be separated on there so you could see? Or could there be another chart of just that average of taxes for cities? Because everybody always says Gladstone's is higher, but I've never seen any kind of a comparison to other cities. I've never looked, but, you know, we always talk about Gladstone taxes being higher. And I would like to see how it compares to other areas.
And so that's certainly something that could be done, but that's just not within, in the scope of doing a housing needs analysis specifically. So we haven't looked at property tax information specifically.
All right. Counselor, please, is that it?
Yes, that is.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor. Beth, there's a couple of things that are jumping out at me. So with the median gross renting, Gladstone at 1225. Going through your report, I'm noticing the average square footage prices on multifamily rental properties, I guess Gladstone's landing at about 141, Oregon City's about 138. So I'm assuming that when we're talking about this particular inventory, we're talking about 900-plus square foot properties, right? In a one-bedroom configuration for that median price?
So this is literally the gross rent, median gross rent out of the census for the 2014 to 18 data, the most recent. We supplement that with effective multifamily rent based on COSAR data. We supplement that with effective multifamily rent based on CoStar data from 2019 for Gladstone because when we were doing the work, that was the most recently available data. And so we see that is a little bit higher than the 1225.
Yeah.
I would also say that this is asking rent and doesn't include things like utilities.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to do is figure out where the real alignment is though between the square footage averages. And I hear what you're saying, and I think, I guess, if you're gonna gauge off of this, for instance, if we're gonna look at inventories, could we gauge off of that, that chart right there for averages on the square footage price? I mean, multiple different sizes of different units, right?
Yeah.
Is this really a fair place to land so that we can talk about what the actual rent prices are based on the unit, based on these square footage prices? Because I'm assuming those are kind of rendered down from CoStar and maybe other sources.
This is from CoStar specifically, and if you wanted to know, I'll do 100 square feet because I can do that math in my head. If you wanted to know how much 100 square foot apartment cost in Gladstone compared to Lake Oswego, obviously, you know, $14, no, no, $141 versus $159.
Right.
So, so yeah, you could use this information to say hypothetically, what if we had an 800-square-foot unit? How much would that cost?
Okay, and so my point of guess is what I'm trying to get to is that when you have a number like 1225 with an average market, fair market value of $1.41 per square, it leads us to believe that we have these larger apartments. You see what I'm saying? I'm kind of trying to figure out, like, what's our real apartment inventory when we're actually talking about square footage across the city? You know, how, how big are these apartments? And I don't know if we have a lot of that information, I think we'd probably have to get it from owners, right? Or off of our, our city rolls, right?
I, I think that I would hesitate to really trust CoStar data for that in a lot of detail.
Okay.
Because you're small enough, and the type of multifamily units that CoStar is likely to, to survey is just going to be a very small sample in Gladstone.
So that's, okay, and that's what, that's what I want to understand. So what I want us to not think is that we have these 900 to 1100 square foot, two-bedroom, three-bedroom apartments that are averaging a median price of 1225. If that's really not our inventory, I want us to, as city council, I want to kind of have an idea as to what our multifamily inventory is. And I know that wasn't your task, I just saw those two numbers and they were very distinctly different if you look at.
They are.
So, okay, thank you for clearing that up for me, and that's, that's all I, I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Garlandon?
So Counselor Todd asked one of my questions, so thank you for doing that. My other question was, when you talk about cost burden renters, do you have any idea, is that something that people move here and take on? Or that's, that higher percentage becomes their reality after choosing to move into Gladstone? I'm not, yeah, just, just asking the question.
I would say it's both. When, let's posit a person coming newly to the Portland region, and when they're looking for housing that's affordable, and let's say they're, they're in the lower income, obviously, they're not going to be looking for renting in a place like Lake Oswego, they're going to be looking in a place like Gladstone or Milwaukee or Gresham or Troutdale. So they'll be looking in the markets that's relatively affordable. So I, I would say that Gladstone, because of its relative affordability, probably takes on, not takes on, but has more lower income households. I see that in Gresham as well. And you don't see it in a place like Lake Oswego. When you look at a place like Lake Oswego or Westland, I can pick on either of them, they just have a smaller share of their housing stock in rentals, and they're just simply more expensive. And so the people who can move there are less likely to be cost burdened.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Beth, move forward.
Moving forward, so we're gonna talk land. There's not much of it, as you know. So these are the steps we take in doing our buildable lands inventory. We work with geographic information systems, GIS data, a lot of it that we got from Metro and Metro's databases. And as we're working with it, we're verifying and testing it to make sure that that data is correct in various ways. So we started this inventory when we started with the Clackamas County, countywide housing needs analysis. And so we did a certain amount of verification then. And then when we came and were working more specifically with Jackie and John, we did another round of verification of this. So we start by classifying land in some mutually exclusive groups, which I'll show you in a few minutes. We look at constraints like steep slopes or flood plains. We look at redevelopment potential, which we talk about in a broader sense, not a map specific sense, because frankly, you don't want to identify any particular parcel as redevelopable in a buildable lands inventory. And then, as I said, we do verification, and it's an iterative process that we've iterated a few times now. So starting with the comprehensive plan, what we started with was all of the plan designations where housing is allowed. And so that doesn't include things like industrial and open space. It does include things like low density and medium and high density and some types of commercial. For that land that allows housing outright, we classify each parcel into one of these mutually exclusive categories. So land that's developed, to say it plainly, it's not vacant, it has a structure on it that has a certain level of value. I'm gonna hop down to vacant, I'll come back to, well, I'll say public, land that is publicly owned or is in some semi-public sort of ownership or land with a conservation easement, that's assumed not to develop over the planning period. Vacant land is land that's fully vacant based on examination of aerial information. So something like Google Earth, but more specific and more recent. Also tax lots that have, that are larger than 2,000 square feet and where development is less than 10% of the lot, and lots that are 95% or more vacant. These are the way that Metro, when it does its buildable lands inventory, that's how it defines vacant. And so what we've done is we've gone through and verified that, again, using Gladstone, Gladstone-specific plan designations and zones. Partially vacant's a little more complicated. You can think of that as a, an existing lot that has one house on it, but the lots at least 2.5 times larger than the minimum lot size and the building value is, I'm bad at greater than and less than. I think that's, the building value is greater than 200,000. But, I'm sorry, less than, I figured I was 50/50, I'm terrible about that, I think I just changed that too. So less than 300,000. So essentially, it's a lot that you can subdivide and have another unit on. There's some other ways of looking at partially vacant. So those are our categories of land. And I can flip back to that in a moment, I just wanted to show you this on a map. So this is what all of the land that has a residential plan designation, this is how it is classified. We're also showing on here the constraints, which I'll show you in a few moments. The constraints we considered were slopes over 25%, wetlands, flood plains, areas with Title III protection, so stream and flood plain protection, idle areas with Title 13, riparian and upland wildlife protection. So you can see, there's quite a lot of these constrained areas, especially around the boundaries of Gladstone. And so, right here, what we're showing you is simply your vacant and your partially vacant land that is unconstrained, that is by plan designation. I can't even point out to you a good example of where the constraints are sort of picked out. I guess I could, right here with this little parcel here. You can see a swoop through the middle of it. So this is land that's unconstrained and vacant or partially vacant. You can see that you don't have a lot of it. So when I look at this in a tabular format, low-density residential land, you've got 14 buildable acres, medium density, you've got one buildable acre, and high density, you've got no buildable acres. An extremely limited land base. Before I go on and start talking about other things here, do you have any questions about the land base and how we got to it?
Counselor Alexander?
I just, what is an option? I mean, for Gladstone, looking at, and I brought this up before, annexation? Is that something that would help us out or no?
I think you could annex land into the city limits to address some of your, your land needs. We didn't look at any of the land around your, around the city limits. I'm betting, just based on some work I've done looking around you, that you might not have a lot of land that's vacant, that's developable. You might be annexing existing development and existing partially vacant land. So I'm not sure how much capacity you would get from that.
Okay.
Counselor Hartman?
I have no questions, thank you.
Counselor Ripley?
I have no questions.
Counselor Tracy?
Beth, could you go back to the other slide, the slide with the table? I just wanted to see, I think there's a, so we don't have two medium-density residential acres, is that correct? I'm seeing.
Got one.
Okay.
What's essentially going on here is Y14 plus one equals 16. Is we've got a decimal point that we're not showing.
I see.
And so, so, it's rounding.
I don't have any other question.
Counselor Garlandon?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Counselor Todd?
I have nothing, thank you for asking that.
All right, thank you.
Certainly, so we'll go on. And so for this approximately 16 acres, we have to figure out how much capacity could that handle? What we did is we looked at historical development densities in Gladstone from 2020. And what we found is that in low-density residential development was about 5.2 dwelling units an acre. If I translated that into lot size, it would be somewhere around 8,000 square feet, if I'm doing the math correctly. I may be doing it wrong. Medium density was just a little under nine dwelling units an acre, and high density is about 25 dwelling units an acre. And so when we look at your 16 acres of vacant land, most of them are in low density, none of them are in high density. We've got 76 dwelling units of capacity on your vacant land, and you can see it broken out here. So that's not a lot of development opportunity. So we're going to transition over to the forecast of new housing. And so Metro forecasts that Gladstone will grow by 321 households between 2021 and 2041. You can see the types of housing that we're talking about here. And in a large part, the percentages of housing by housing type are really based on the discussions that we've had about needing a wider range of housing type, housing types. So some single-family detached, more multifamily housing than you've got currently. So we're looking at equal of those as well as single-family attached and duplex through quads. And that's assuming that you implement House Bill 2001 and allow the middle-income housing the way that, that you're supposed to allow it. So then, what this is showing is an illustration of different housing affordability, just simply for single-family housing types, the fact that you've got more affordable and less affordable single-family housing. And what this up here is showing, this graph, is looking at the income distribution by median family income. It's a very complicated graph. If you have the housing needs analysis here, I want to show this. This, essentially what we're doing is we're dissecting the median family income for Clackamas County as it applies in Gladstone. And so households that have income of less than 50% of median family income, new housing that's developed for those households is generally income-restricted government-subsidized housing. You don't develop market-rate housing at those prices. And you can see here that the existing distribution of households in Gladstone, 48, 38% of Gladstone's housing is currently below 50% of median family income. These numbers here are for your 312 new households, based on these percentages. So we're looking at a fair bit of housing that is difficult to develop at market rate between 50% and 120% of median family income. Those are your middle-income hous, housing, households. And so what we see is you've got a fair number of households, nearly 40% in those income categories. Those, some of them can be developed at market rate and sometimes not, can be very difficult to develop at the lower part of market rate for, for this income category. And what I'm really saying is for households that earn between 50 and 80% of median family income, building new housing that's affordable to those households can be very difficult. That's what I'm trying to say poorly. And when you look at the upper income bracket, that's where you end up with a lot of new single-family housing built at, 22% of Gladstone's households are in that income category. So this is acknowledging and giving you some information about the affordability that you might be expecting to need over the next 20 years. It's a wide range, and that's true for most of the cities in the Portland metro region. So then we come down to the, the end, which is you had capacity for 76 units, you have a forecast of 320 units. When you compare the two, you've got a deficit of 244 units. You just don't have enough capacity. Now, what's interesting here is your land need just isn't that big because a lot of the deficit of capacity is in medium and high-density housing. So you're, how you're going to meet this, John's gonna talk about this in a few minutes. But how you meet this is implementation of the code discussions that you've been talking about, actually implementing your downtown revitalization plan, looking at your code audit and making some of the changes that we're talking about there, the House Bill 2001, implementing that. And so before I turn it over to John to talk about those more, are there questions about the information I just presented?
All right, Counselor Alexander?
No questions.
Counselor Todd?
Sorry, I'm good.
Counselor Ripley?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Counselor Tracy?
No questions, thanks, Mayor.
Counselor Garlandon?
No questions, thank you.
Counselor Hartman?
All right, I just had one quick question, just for my clarification. On slide 20, the, the forecast, is this a, what they would like to see us do? You know, who made the percentages, I guess, of the preliminary housing mix?
We did in, in looking at requirements from Metro, actually, it's not requirements from Metro, it's requirements from the state for cities within the metropolitan UTB. And that says that cities will provide opportunity for development of at least 50% of new housing to be single-family attached or multifamily. And multifamily includes duplex on up through multifamily. So you can't have more than 50% of new housing being single-family detached. In looking at your land base and looking at the policies that you've been working with, and um and looking at the affordability characteristics, that's what we based um the forecast here by different types of housing on.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm just curious because if we don't have a ton of land to build on, how do we achieve a hundred and twenty-eight single family detached units?
And from the state's perspective, um the state would have no objection if you got more multifamily housing and less single family housing. The state would have an objection if you're planning for a lot more single family housing than you're allowed to plan for.
Okay, perfect. That's great clarification. Thank you so much.
Sure.
And Beth, one of the options to look at is reducing the lot sizes. Isn't that one of the things that we're looking at?
I believe it is, but I I should um turn over those kind of questions to John.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly. I'll mute myself and be here if there are any other questions.
Thank you very much, Beth.
Madam Mayor, should I jump in or do you want to first um summarize anything else from the H and A conversation?
Nope, that sounds, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I I think um you're asking great questions. I think they're very pertinent. Um, and and in a nutshell, I think the next phase of our work um hopefully is going to go a long way to um answering your questions and addressing the challenge that Beth's report has outlined. Uh, actually, one of her last slides, it talked about a goal of a hundred and twenty-eight units, if I recall, for multifamily. Just by means of of comparison, the new project um in downtown Milwaukee, which may be a little bit bigger than we want to see. I think it's five stories, four stories of residential over ground for commercial, that has a hundred and nine units in one project. So just to put in context, if if what we need is roughly a hundred and twenty-eight units of multifamily in the next twenty years, let's say two projects, two three-story downtown development projects, which are not currently allowed by the code, but which will be if if the downtown revitalization plan uh language that they propose is adopted, will get us there. So I guess the the larger point pivoting from from Beth's um documentation of the challenge we face of the need for housing, especially more affordable housing, I think um we are now about to embark on a um a process to actually change the code to align with HB two thousand and one, to align with the housing code audit, to align with the downtown revitalization plan.
Well, John, John, let me interrupt you. I'm sorry. You're going to be talking on the community engagement strategy piece of this, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, well then let me, let me hold you up right there.
Okay.
So that I can finish doing the public testimony for the housing needs analysis and if it's all right, then we'll go ahead and go into that.
Great, my apologies.
No, no, I'm sorry. Okay, so um next is going to be public testimony and I'm going to be doing it in three sections. Um, first is going to be testimony in favor of the housing needs analysis. Second will be testimony against it. And then third will be neutral testimony. Um, Tammy Bannock, do we have anyone that has signed up to speak on either of those?
We do not.
Do we have anyone that has raised their hand?
I do not see anyone that has their hands up currently.
Okay, well then we don't have any public testimony. Um, Jackie, would you like to make any further comments on this? I was asking if you had any further um follow-up comments. No, Jackie does not. All right, so then um I call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Again.
Motion was made by Council Tracy and seconded by Council Ripley to close the public hearing. Do we have any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please? Tammy?
Sorry about that. Counselor Alexander.
I'm good.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, the public hearing is closed at um at seven twenty-six PM on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. All right, so we're not asking Jackie to actually make a decision on this. This is something that you're just going to bring forward at our next council meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct. We will prepare an ordinance and bring it back at your regular meeting on March ninth for adoption. Um, and then we will move on to the next steps, which I think is what John is also going to talk about.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so now we can move on to item number two, City of Gladstone Community Engagement Strategy Housing Zone Code Project. Take it away, John.
Right, and actually Jackie, if you could put that last slide up again, that I think that'll help. So um uh maybe I'll cover this this quickly. So yes, uh you'll adopt an ordinance hopefully on March ninth to formally prove the housing needs analysis and we'll be able to send it into a DLCD so that uh we could get the they'll write the check to cover the cost of the work. Um. Where what I was starting to say is that um the, we have actually drafted an RFP for a consultant team to actually make the code changes. So in a way, everything we've been doing for the last three years is prelude. It's very important policy work. It speaks to creating more affordable housing, um medium density along Portland Avenue, uh a a mix of uh single family and what is often called missing middle housing in our neighborhoods. Um, uh, but all the policy documents uh don't actually change the code to allow those things. So for instance, in your downtown, when I was first retained by the cities a couple of years ago, uh one of the things that Jackie had me do was to talk with developers, both uh for-profit and nonprofit affordable housing developers. Um, and and they were all enthusiastic about Portland Avenue, but they also said, John, your your minimum, your, I'm sorry, your maximum density near downtown is is very conservative. It wouldn't allow, not only would it not allow that project up in Milwaukee, but even two-story mixed-use development of a more modest scale. So um.
Uh, we have a a, an email that's up on our screen. Somebody's writing an email. There we go. Thank you.
Um, I think that was a Russian bot. I apologize for that. So uh.
It was my fault. I apologize.
Um. I I think it was a laundry list if I read it correctly. Um, anyway, uh, yes, so the, we are about to embark on the zoning code changes that will now uh put into effect the policies that that the city council has endorsed these last several years. Um. And and I can speak to the particulars of of what that process will look like. What I wanted to focus on, Madam Mayor, this is the right time, is to talk about the community engagement strategy.
Yes, please.
Great. So um some of you will recall, when we did the housing code audit in two thousand and nineteen, I can't believe now it's almost two years ago that that was completed. Um, we had a advisory committee um that looked at what was being proposed and asked for their comments on it. Their their strongest uh recommendation by far was, okay, when you do this, City of Gladstone, make sure that you have a rigorous community engagement strategy. Therefore, when we went to DLCD to get funding for the H and A, which Beth Goodman just walked you through, the housing needs analysis, we also got funding from them to um to do a, to create a community engagement strategy that will be used uh as part of the zoning code rewrite. So hopefully you've had a chance to at least um skim that strategy. Uh, the work was done by um another top-notch professional, a woman named Deb Myhoff, who couldn't be here tonight. But um the strategy is is thorough. It talks about the goals of community engagement. Um, and if I had to summarize that at a sort of elevator speech level, I'd say those goals are to make sure that that community participants in this process really understand uh what what the options are, what policy choices are before them, before you. Um, and then have meaningful engagement. So uh something other than the typical um token outreach strategy is going to really be a a chance for significant engagement. Another important goal I'd say of this effort is that it's it's a much broader participation. Um, much more diverse. So uh I I was interested to learn that that um eleven percent of of Gladstone uh residents do not speak English as their first language at home. So how much opportunity have they had historically to participate in a process like that? I would say probably fairly limited. What about people who live in um in mobile home parks? Uh, maybe they're addressed, they don't even know about an opportunity uh for input into some major city policy initiative. So one of the things that Deb stressed in her report and her recommendation is to to be much more intentional and comprehensive about the outreach. Another factor she mentioned, I don't need to walk you through every point she makes, but um we're operating in the time of COVID. So uh in ordinary times, we we had more options on how to do outreach. So whatever uh process we ultimately end up with has to be much more thoughtful of, a lot of people are still fearful um understandably so about about um in-person meetings. So we need to be intentional about that. Um, another uh another thought is that um the community engagement um should entail more going to the community. Um, uh, historically, the the community engagement processes I've been involved in is you come down to my office, you come down to City Hall if you want to hear about this proposal. Well, let's go to churches or to um community neighborhood meetings or something like that. I think um there's a lot of ideas and I'm not going to try to summarize twenty pages of material, but um it's a really, it's an excellent document. I think it's going to take Gladstone to the next level in terms of how it engages a diverse community in your decision-making. One point I want to stress is that um what I was starting to say a little bit earlier is the immediate next step after adoption of the housing needs analysis on March ninth um is to actually issue an RFP, a request for proposals, seeking a consultant team um to actually do this zoning code changes, but that team is also going to have to have a community engagement expert who will then uh refine Deb Myhoff's recommendations um into a specific proposal, which we will negotiate with that selected uh consultant team. All this is to say, sometime around the end of this year, after a thorough community engagement piece, we're going to have before you to review uh new zoning code that implements these ideas, that creates more housing choice, that if it's done right, will also create more housing affordability um for today's and the future's residents of Gladstone. And that work, again, not to be too repetitive, will have have gotten a lot of voices involved in in crafting those recommendations, the people who will be affected by it. I feel like this is, there's, there's a lot of material you're hearing tonight between Beth and myself. Um, I I should stop there and ask um if there's any questions and also if there's any comments about the community engagement strategy, any concerns you have, like what did we miss? So I want to stop and and entertain questions or comments.
Um, I'll go through each council individually. I had two comments. One is, this is going to be so challenging, John, and you know that. It's, it's difficult in regular conditions, but under COVID, it's going to be almost impossible. So I um kudos to anybody that can take this on and run with it. And also to let people know that zoning code changes are not done lightly. This is something that is very onerous. There's a lot of steps that have to be followed, so this is not something that's just going to get pushed through with no community engagement. That is a huge part of this. Um, the people that I would also like to see engaged in this, which I didn't see on the list, are seniors. They're the ones that I'm having more contact, contact with than most that are really feeling the struggle of being able to afford where they live and also veterans. I didn't see them on the list, so I would definitely like to see those stakeholders invited to the table. Counsel Alexander.
Oh, just, it's going to be challenging, like you said, and I I agree with hearing from all those groups. Um, and you can put something in the, in the city newsletter, but still they've got to have the means and and, you know, to get on Zoom and attend if there was a meeting and I just see it being very hard to get that much community engagement on this.
Council Ripley.
I don't have any questions on this one.
All right, Council Todd.
Um, I I do like the, how comprehensive this engagement is. I don't think we've ever seen anything like that with any of the things that we've done, because usually what happens is, you know, we have a meeting, you have five, ten people who are just, you know, upset about it and those are the people that show up. So I like the going to people. I'm not sure how that's going to work in um the time of COVID, but I do see that that's later this spring, so maybe there's some more outdoor event type things that we can do. Um, but I like how exhaustive it is. Um, because so many times, you know, they're almost a full year later and I still have people asking me, what's that building down the street at the end of Portland Avenue at Glen Echo? So, you know, it's like, you know, sort of going, let, the more that we can, we can do, our, our due diligence, um, I'm I'm happy with. So thank you, John.
Council Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, yeah, I want to piggyback on what Counselor Todd said. This is amazing information and super thorough. Um, one comment that I have received that um I think we can be mindful of is as we're engaging the community, really partnering with the school district on getting this information out um and also being mindful that as we build new homes and invite new families to live here, um, we have to make sure our school district can also handle the amount of kids coming into play. Um, I know that we are in a decline of of students, but um I know that uh, you know, we could possibly run into something where uh we don't have the capacity to accept new children into our school districts. Um, so just being mindful of that. Um, in terms of like getting out there and getting in touch with folks, um, do we have plans to make sure we have this information written in different languages like Spanish or Russian? I know those two populations are huge here.
Yes, um, she focused admittedly more on Spanish and uh she said that all major communications should be um bilingual. I think there's partners around uh the the region who could help us with that. So I know folks at Clackamas County, I know they have Spanish uh language translation. Um, great point about the Russian as well, so um uh we'll we'll look on that. We have time. This process isn't going to start for a couple of months, so and by the way, your ideas, all the ideas I'm hearing, I'm writing these down, these are great ideas, so they're only going to make this better. So thank you for that suggestion, also the one about the school district. That's, that's a great point.
Thank you. And the other thing, it's just not as creative as we need to get, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, happy to help. Curious if it does have to come down to printing, like, let's say materials like, I don't know, flyers or door hangers, does that cost already um accounted for? If we needed to do that for more engagement where we can't have in-person?
Um, I think you're bringing up an important point. To do a thorough community engagement effort is going to cost more. And so in writing this RFP, you know, we'll get um not just a proposal, the specific proposals from the different consultant teams, but also a cost. And, you know, I, not to get ahead of Jackie, but if if you know, someone says, we're going to do really incredible work, we're going to translate into multiple languages, we'll have the flyers and all that, but it's going to cost another X thousand, I think it's, it's incumbent on me, working with Jackie, to come back and say, all right, this is, this really knocks it out of the park in terms of community engagement, but it's going to cost more and then get your, your blessing on that. Um, uh, you know, we we know that there's always limited resources, but um, I'm I'm hearing from all of you that there's a recognition of the importance of this work. So don't be surprised if we come back to you in a couple of months, say, all right, we need a little bit more money. Um, and and it's Jackie's in my job to figure out where it might come from, but but we would want your blessing on that.
Never ask them for more money.
Ask, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than for permission. Is that what you're saying?
Neither, neither. Is that it, Council?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Council Tracy.
Um, thanks, John. This is pretty thorough. Um, having just gone through a fairly extensive community engagement process myself. Uh, I think you're hitting all the points. It's, it's a lot more dense. Um, I'm going to echo Counselor Hartman. You know, we got to reach out to the partners, right? Uh, we've been working with United Oregon on the Clackamas County um sites that were We've been working with United Oregon on the Clackamas County sites that we're working on, really kind of dig down and try to find out who some of these community partners are that some of our citizens are relying on, whether it's, you know, whether it's the faith-based partners, or, like I said, Unite's working with us. I know that Martine Koblenz up there at Clackamas County has been very helpful with kind of assigning, or not assigning, but helping us find those folks and the resources that they use in the communities. It's really thorough. I mean, this is, you're correct. Deb put together a very ambitious outreach plan or outreach construct. But I certainly wouldn't shy away from it. We need that input. So I like this. But to the mayor's point, there probably some subgroups have been left off, and some sectors have been left off. And we probably need to make sure we're capturing that as well. The other thing that we're looking at, I mean, there's so many options here for housing. And you and I have had this conversation a couple of times, John. I mean, it's like, it's almost like that kind of splatter approach, right? But I see you're now refining it. We're starting to look a lot closer at like the reality of what Gladstone is. Your point has always been, you know, Portland Avenue is Portland Avenue. It's not necessarily as desirable until we get to that code change, right? And zone codes change. This is real thorough, but I also know that there's money attached to these kinds of ambitions. So we're going to have to all remember that that's going to be a cost. So no other question.
And there are resources, Counselor Tracy, you know, and actually looking at you, I'm thinking, man, I'm going to call my friends at Metro. I'm going to call DLCD. Could you help us with the cost of that additional outreach?
Yeah. And you know what's interesting? You bring that up. I think that the value of that on a regional scale from the metro's perspective may be interesting enough that there would be some resources there. But I can't imagine that the county's value on this as well, to really know where your cities are with regard to these, with the, regard to these, you know, BLIs, the inventories, all of the housing that can or can't come into the city. You know, this is important data for a lot of folks. So I would say that somebody out there can help us kind of with that, because the data is going to be valuable to them. All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Counselor Garlington?
I'm going to send.
I'm sorry, what?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, John?
No, we're not looking for formal approval of this one, just your kind of overall blessing, but I'm hearing it from you. And I will let Deb know that you all commended her work. So thank you for that.
Well, we do have a recommended staff action to approve the Gladstone Community Engagement Strategy for the Housing Zoning and Code Project. Jackie, do you want us to take a vote on that tonight or hold off till our next council meeting?
I think it would be great if you could do that tonight, because the next step is to finalize the request for proposals so that we can get that posted by mid-March.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion then to approve Gladstone?
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Garlington?
I thought on work sessions, we weren't making decisions. And it's fine if we do. I just misunderstood, apparently.
This is a special meeting. The work session comes after this item.
Okay.
Yeah, these are sensitive issues. Yes, Counselor Ripley?
When we look at these, the housing needs analysis, and how do we compare that to our parking needs? If you go and add 100 residences on Portland Avenue, you need to put 100 to 200 cars down there. And have we also looked at the infrastructure? For on a 100 degree placement plan with our current water rates, some of the stuff we wouldn't be able to do for 100 years until the infrastructure was repaired enough to add more volume going down. Has that been looked into? Has that been considered into any of this plan that's been looked at?
Yes, it's all part of what the city has been working on since 2017. Parking is going to become a topic, because if you change the requirements for development, you're going to reduce the parking requirements. And so, yes, this is all one big package that we have been working on methodically for the last four years. And now it's time to actually do the work and let the people know what we're proposing to do. Infrastructure and parking is all part of this package that we're looking at.
Anything else?
I did want to be clear for Counselor Garlington. She is correct that tonight is a special meeting and a work session. The part that you're in right now is a special meeting where you held a public hearing. And you don't have to formally vote on the community engagement strategy. You can just give a consensus for us to move forward. We've got some nice recommendations on that. But I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
So, so city administrator Beth, so we're not voting to accept this as it stands. I mean, it can, it needs to be modified. It could be enhanced, right? We're just voting to accept that as a piece of this, as a piece of this policy going forward, correct?
Yeah, my recommendation was to go ahead and let John and I refine it with some of your recommendations. And then we will bring it back March 9th for you to adopt separately with the Housing Needs Analysis ordinance.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Instead of a motion, we should probably do a consensus on this one. So Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
And I also say yes. So great job, guys. This is incredible. All right.
Thanks.
So the special meeting section is over. I would like to have someone make a motion to adjourn into our work session so that it's a little bit more formal. Would someone make that motion, please?
I'm moved.
I have a second.
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 Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Todd to adjourn out of our special meeting and re-adjourn into a work session. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy?
As soon as I can find the mute switch. Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. So our special meeting was adjourned at 7:49 PM on February 23rd, 2021. And our work session has begun at 7:49 PM, February 23rd, 2021. The only, actually, so the first item, hold on a second, Jackie. I'm sorry, I skipped right over what we added.
If you want to do it after this item, we can do that.
Can we just go ahead and do that? Okay, so the first item on our work session is number three, discussion regarding proposed amendments to Gladstone Municipal Code 9.49, City Parks and Property Exclusion, and Gladstone Municipal Code 9.60, Camping Prohibited. Staff, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our police chief has been doing a lot of work with the city attorney's office and our sergeant. This is our first work session of the year, and we're bringing it to you to provide you some background information on a proposed ordinance change that we're going to recommend at the city council at your next meeting. So this is a time for the police chief to just give you an overview of the proposed changes that will be coming to you and kind of give some justification as to why we need to do them now.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. Is it my turn now?
It is.
Okay, welcome. And it seems to be a long night for everybody tonight. So, but I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about these two ordinances, ordinance 9.49, City Parks and City Property Exclusion, and 9.60, Camping Prohibited. A little bit of background on this. I also want to let you know that I invited Sergeant Jim Leake to participate. He's going to participate on this and talking about really the nuts and bolts of the ordinances. But bringing it to your attention a little bit is, our discussion is going to go over some recent Ninth Circuit Court rulings, Martin versus Boise and Blake versus Grants Pass as it relates to camping prohibited in in city jurisdictions. Fortunately for us in Gladstone, we don't see, I mean, excuse me, the homeless population is growing, it seems, all around the metro area. And jurisdictions are finding a lot of difficulties in how to deal with this. Unfortunately for Gladstone, though, we're not experiencing the same things that other jurisdictions are. However, as it was brought to our attention by the city attorney, who was also on the Zoom call, in case we have legal questions, Emily, that our current ordinances are essentially, as I said in my memo, unconstitutional. They don't follow the Ninth Circuit rulings and/or Boise, well, the Blake versus Grants Pass, excuse me. Also, the reason why we're here is this current legislation, House Bill 3115, that really focuses on the Boise verdict and/or the Boise ruling and the Grants Pass. So really what we're trying to do with our ordinances tonight is to balance the dignity for our homeless and follow, and follow the rules as outlined in these rulings, while at the same time maintaining the livability within the city that we're used to and increase those things. So right now, as we move forward, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Sergeant Jim Leake to talk about exactly what we're proposing and what we're recommending to you, and be able to answer any questions you may have regarding this, because I anticipate there might be some. So Sergeant Leake, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you folks hear me okay? Thank you, Chief. Councilors, Mayor, thank you for having me work with you on this session here. As the chief mentioned, Blake versus Grants Pass and Martin versus Boise are two decisions that have come down since around 2018 that have changed how we operate with the homeless population. A lot of things have come about to legislate their rights and they've become a protected class based on their homeless status. Just to go over a little bit of what Blake versus Grants Pass came up with was Grants Pass, through a combination of ordinances and customs and policies, was basically unconstitutionally punishing people for their life-sustaining activities like resting, sitting, resting, sleeping. And despite having no shelter in the town, Grants Pass engaged in deliberate campaign and passed heavily enforced specific ordinances targeting these life-sustaining activities that people that were experiencing homelessness was part of their life. They came up with a wide variety of anti-homeless measures, which luckily, with the help from Emily, I think only these two that we're addressing right now needed to be changed. And as well in Blake and Grants Pass, they talked about the civil fines being levied against people who are impoverished and can't afford housing, and how it becomes cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment. Martin versus Boise spoke of criminalizing conduct, which is an unavoidable consequence for being homeless, namely sitting, lying, or sleeping on streets. The Ninth Circuit Court reasoned that sitting, lying down, and sleeping in public is unavoidable conduct that is inseparable from a homeless person's status, because they have nowhere else to go. And they recommended that communities should immediately repeal these ordinances. And part of what is we are looking at for our ordinances through the Eighth Amendment is the excessive bail or excessive fines that are imposed for different activities these folks are contacted through as a result of them being homeless. And then the right to occupy public space is included in this section, because a person has the right to rest. They have a right to eat and sleep, and humans become unable to function without these basic rights. So if I can begin with the camping ordinance, Chapter 9.60, Camping Prohibited in Certain Places, with the help of Emily, we added some definitions to this policy that you folks may not have gotten the update yet. But in this policy that you received in the packet, everything in red are the proposed suggestions that we have come up with. Anything that has a strike-through line in it is the old policy and the old language. We went ahead and defined camp, campsite, city property, to store or storage, camp paraphernalia, camp facilities, and a park. I believe to camp and campsite is listed on your copies. We, with the help of Emily, sending us the information and getting the changes made to this copy here this week. City property, we went ahead and defined it as means it includes all real property owned by the city other than public right-of-way and utility easement, as those are defined herein, and all property held in proprietary capacity by the city. To store or storage means to put aside or accumulate for use when needed to put for safekeeping or to place or leave in a location. Camp paraphernalia includes, but is not limited to, tarps, cots, beds, sleeping bags, blankets, mattresses, hammocks, or non-city-designated cooking facilities or similar equipment. Camp facilities means includes, but is not limited to tents, huts, temporary shelters, or vehicles. And a park means any publicly-owned real property placed under the jurisdiction of the city, the City Park and Recreation Advisory Board, or designee for park or recreational purposes, including all land granted to the city for such purposes. So we wanted to go ahead and just put those definitions in there to make sure things are very clear. Part of the strike-through of the camping prohibited talks about unlawful for any person to intentionally or knowingly camp on a sidewalk, street, alley, lane, public right-of-way. Those are the direct areas that Blake versus Grants Pass and Martin versus Boise talked about. Those are all public areas. So in trying to change this to be constitutional, we also wanted to still have rules, still have the ability to enforce certain things, which we have our Oregon state laws that we can enforce as well. So it's not going to make it this a free-for-all, where they can just camp in the parks, camp anywhere they want. And so you may notice that we did add in the areas for prohibited camping in parks in a manner reducing the clear continuous sidewalk width to less than five feet, so that sidewalks aren't blocked. Publicly-owned or maintained parking lots, because obviously those parking lots are not designed to be camp zones. They are designed for parking. And then all public property located in an area zone for residential use under Title 17 of this code. In speaking with Emily, she said that all of these are still legal rules that we can make within the city, because we are still offering areas for homeless folks to camp, which would be outside of the residential areas. So more of our commercial areas and sidewalks. And then we decided to go with a time limit of when someone can be camped out in the open and camped on the sidewalks under, let's see, 9.60.020 Section B, small letter B. It's unlawful for them to camp or maintain a campsite on any city property during the hours of 6:30 AM to 9:30 PM. And to store more than 120 cubic feet of personal. and to store more than a hundred and twenty cubic feet of personal property. Obviously, we all want to make sure that we don't have the big property piles on the sidewalk blocking sidewalks for the city during the day, which leaves it open to, these folks can camp there at night, camp on public sidewalks outside of the residential area. So I think that leaves us some areas that we are designating that they are able to camp. But as the chief said, we are not facing a huge issue with that currently. Most of our folks usually use the footbridge and go back over to Oregon City where they have a pretty well established camp over there. But occasionally they come over here to get away from that world over there.
Can I jump in here real quick, Sergeant Lee?
Sure.
Just real quick too is what these are, as we don't have the issues that others have, Oregon City does have a lot of resources because it is a county seed. So they have tremendous resources over there. At the same time, you know, if and when we are forced to deal with this type of situation, we also will be providing at least a resource guide to these individuals that will help them. I know there's one that I'm very familiar with called Street Roots that puts together a lot of different resources for homeless individuals and, and people in need. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna work obviously very hard. As always, we look for compliance before we enforce, but the whole idea behind having these ordinances in place is if in the event we are faced with a situation, we are constitutionally grounded and sound in, in what we're doing and how we're doing it and that we're, you know, providing dignity and, and rights to individuals that is required. So. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Chief. And just to give some information to the counselors who are newer or may not know, we work with some homeless organizations that help house some of our local transients. And we've gotten three very well-known homeless folks housing, permanent housing, at least for the next two years. It's paid through the next two years for them. A lot of you folks may know Darwin. He's one of our celebrities around the city and he was very happy to get a roof over his head. So we're not trying to push them around, as the chief said. We, we try to get them some resources and, and in working with some of the organizations that are able to come out to Clackamas County, we have gotten three people housing recently in the last year. Are there any questions regarding anything I went over for the camping prohibited in certain places, Chapter nine point six zero?
I'll go through Councilor Garland.
I just, it says here that it's a Class C violation. The question is, is it, we're talking about people who have absolutely no money at all. And, and I understand that what you're proposing here is probably the same as many jurisdictions. I just wonder if is there any other way to, to, to? I mean, if somebody, if you were going to get somebody a house and all of a sudden this came up that they've got seven fines for living set Class C violations that, that were unpaid, I mean, how do you set that aside so that they can then move forward? And, and I'm just asking, I'm not judging, I'm just asking what that would look like.
No, one of the, Jim, do you want to answer this? You want me to?
I, I can, I can add something here. So we actually changed this down, moved it down to a Class C because it was a Class B violation, which was a much higher fine to help with the Eighth Amendment of, you know, the excessive bail or excessive fines. But in most cases, we will let, we, we use the fines as a consequence. But in most cases, we let our city attorney know this person is a homeless individual who doesn't have means to pay for this. So there are other ways and, and there's several programs in Clackamas County that we try to get them services and help to, so they don't have these fines hanging over the top of them. And, and in most cases, we're, all of us officers are, are more looking for them being willing to accept some help. And sometimes this forces them to court. They have a supposed fine that they're gonna owe. And, and in most cases, those fines go away. It's just a consequence at the, at the, at the front part of this.
I figured you had a really good answer. Thank you.
Councilor Tracy?
Thanks, Mayor. This looks really good, Sergeant Lake. I think the language looks good here. I think it'll, it'll be effective. Chief, you know, the other set, and it's, I know it's a different code violation, but the other set, of course, is campers and motor homes. You know, those folks are going to still need the resources. So I'm assuming that when the officers are making contact with any one of those folks who are, who are houseless, but yet, you know, sheltering in a RV, we're also extending those resource potentials, you know, resource potentials or opportunities to them as well, yes?
Yes, yeah, absolutely we are. We have to provide some resources for them. We have to. Otherwise, we don't want the city to turn out to be a camp haven type thing, but at the same time, we get these people help. And, and as much as we can do, we'd rather get them helped than enforce. That's, that's truly the bottom line.
So my question to both of you is law enforcement professionals who worked around the region, do, do, what, what, what's your take on why we've, we've really kind of missed? And I'm not complaining, but why have we not had the, some of the problems that, I mean, even in Milwaukee? Is there any sense in the police department as to why?
Well, I'll take a crack at this, counselor, is, one, I think it's our location. I think being right next to Oregon City where all the resources are, I think that's where, and a lot of maybe food banks and, and shelters there. I think that's a, I think that's a big reason why. I think you will find people by the rivers and camping out for the shade, but we don't typically see them, you know, see campers downtown Gladstone. So we don't have, there's nothing inviting them truly to be there. And so when I say inviting, I mean, I'm meaning shelters and, and, and resources. So that's my take and, and our officers are pretty, pretty compassionate and, and pretty empathetic with them too, by trying to get them help. So that's my best guess.
Well, no, I, I think it's great. I just, you know, it's like, I think about the Highway ninety-nine bridge, right, under the, the, above and on the bridge. I walked that numerous times, you know, over the months and really have not encountered camp, encampments up there. I don't know if you guys are doing a lot of sweeps of that area, but it just doesn't seem like people are really putting down roots necessarily on our side of the river.
Well, and, and some, and some of it too is, is some of that's private property owned by the railroad or owned by, you know, a private entity in which we can, we will enforce trespass laws. So that's, that's part of it. And I think, I think they understand that. I don't think they are intentionally, you know, the homeless want to intentionally violate the law and get locked up because that's not what they're out there for. So they'll go, go ahead and move along and we'll pass along the resources at the same time.
Well, I appreciate the work and this is good language and I'm glad that we're adjusting because I would hate to put us in the position where we might have to suffer the consequences that the other cities did with, you know, the daylighting of their.
Right.
Councilor Ripley?
I did have one question about this designated camping area, the designated area for people if they need it. Are there facilities near there or is it further away from facilities and other options? Because when they don't have somewhere to go, they're just going to go right there on your sidewalk. And that really turns into a biohazard on that. So is this, us providing an area, should we be providing a facility also?
Well, the unfortunate thing is when we provide facilities and we start providing amenities, we're going to attract more people to that location. So.
How do you keep it from ending up on the sidewalk and those cars and everywhere else when they're, they're peeing crapping all the sidewalks in front of businesses on sidewalks? That's, that really turns the town into a undesirable town. I could walk down any sidewalk in Portland because you never know what you're stepping on right now.
And to address a little more of Counselor Tracy's question as to why we aren't seeing as much activity here is honestly, when there are consequences for your actions, you change your behavior. And our officers hold people accountable. And as the chief mentioned, we also look to help them in the same way. So when they shoplift to eat, we are still arresting them and citing them for the theft. But then we are a lot of times out of our own pocket buying them food so that they can eat. We are making sure that they are put in touch with resources in Oregon City. Some folks come out here to take a vacation from downtown Portland, as you mentioned, Counselor Ripley. It's, it's not fun. I used to work down there on the transit police and you have to watch where you walk. You're right. So I think when we see people that are using the sidewalk as a restroom, again, they're held accountable and that changes their behavior. And, you know, I worked on a neighborhood team in Gresham for four years. And when we held people accountable, it changed their behavior. They didn't come back and do the same stuff. And they realized what the police department and what the city and what the citizens would accept versus them taking over and it kind of becoming chaotic.
So I'll go back to this designated, designated area. Are we setting people up for failure by putting them somewhere where there's not the proper stuff they need? If I could tell you, I want you to, you, you have to stay over in the North Fordy over here, but if you need to go to the bathroom, you gotta walk two miles. People ain't gonna do that. They gotta go, they go, and then we set them up to fail. And then we're really not helping them. That's just my thoughts because I'm sticking, this is horrible in a lot of areas and we really don't want that around here. But the people do have, you know, I don't think you have the right to sleep in a little sidewalk and cause people to trip when they're walking down. It's just weird when you have to walk or step over people in Portland.
Right.
Weird sometimes. They don't care, but we don't want that around here. But how do we keep it clean and, and give these people the rights that they deserve? I think that's my thought whenever I see it.
Right. And I think right now we don't have any legal requirement to provide restrooms. There are restrooms during the day at the different parks. And most of these folks know that and they know, you know, where they're going to go and clean up, where they're going to go to the bathroom. We talked to people before and they say, hey, I'm going to hit the bathroom over, you know, at Meldrum and then I'm going to go back over to Oregon City or, you know, and there are some outhouses strategically positioned around the city that these folks know about too. So I, I see your concern with setting them up for failure. But again, we can kind of fall back on, so far it hasn't been desirable. So we don't necessarily want to attract them by setting up amenities, if you see what I'm trying to say.
Right. Counselor Hartman?
Thank you. Um, I just, thank you for clarifying what you guys do, how you do handle. I think it's important to let everyone know how you do offer services. It's really important to give them those options so they're just not fined and, and they, you can see that you guys have a heart. I just had a clarification. I couldn't find the information, but I thought I read that we weren't allowed to find houseless folks if we don't have services within our jurisdiction. As I, and I could be wrong. I just, that's, that's what I thought I read is that we can't, we're not supposed to find at all.
Emily, would you mind addressing the legal aspect of that part?
Sorry, I thought I was going off mute. I'm Emily Matisar. I'm with the city attorney's office. And as Sergeant Lake said, I've been working with the police on this issue. So the cases aren't super clear on how much they, they have said that you can't excessively fine a person for being homeless. So we talked about how high it can go. There's not a line in the case law right now. I think my recommendation, and I have shared this with Sergeant Lake and the chief, is, you know, to enforce the other code violations, if there are other code violations, rather than citing under camping, that's kind of the last resort. So like the counselor was mentioning, if there are, if there is a trash pile, you know, there's a violation for that and cite that first. And so that's how I would recommend doing it. I, I, I can't guarantee that, that this number would be constitutional, but I think it's pretty safe. The case law is much higher, like hundreds of dollars. So does that answer your question?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. That was all I had. Thank you very much.
Counselor Todd?
I'm good. Thank you. Everybody's asked really good questions. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander?
I just want to applaud you guys for getting three of our homeless people off the street. That's awesome. And I know the homeless community is tightening it. I know a few of them and they see that and it opens the door and gives the other ones hope and, and it's good. It's a good thing. And I wish there was more resources so we could get more of them like that facility or, or help or housing. So good job.
Thank you.
I was wondering what happened to Darwin because I haven't seen him at Safeway for, for a little bit. So thank you for doing that. That's awesome. So through the food pantry, we interact with quite a few homeless people that live in this area. And I want you to know that across the board, they are always raving about how, how professional and how caring our police department is when it comes to interactions with them. So thank you very, very much. You, you respect them, which is something that they don't get in most places. So thank you for what you guys are doing. I think it looks great. I think it looks great. So you don't need anything from us other than?
Well, I think, yeah, yeah, I think, I think what we're looking for too is if, you know, to answer questions, but also we're going to get into the exclusionary process, which I think will tie into what Counselor Hartman and Counselor Ripley was, was kind of bringing in and, and Emily talking about charging other crimes. So when we talk about not creating an environment in a park or what have you, this is, this is one of the, one of the important pieces behind making sure we, we provide opportunities in space while at the same time adhering to our livability. And, and so when we look at that, I think Sergeant Lake will go ahead and move forward and, and talk about the next ordinance. Unless you have other questions on the camping.
Chief, the only clarification I wanted is when you bring this back in March, the city attorney will have some of those definitions flushed out. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. In fact, in fact, the, the city attorney has already provided those definitions. So they'll be, they'll be put in. So when I work with Tammy, if we decide to move forward, I'll make sure those are inserted.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next one?
Okay. So the next one is Chapter nine point four nine, City Parks and City Property Exclusion. And with this one, we also added definition of city property, which is going to be the same as in the camping ordinance. And so when I worked at TriMet, when they gave someone an exclusion from the TriMet system, they always made the exclusion go into effect after the time period for when they would have requested an appeal and gone to their appeal hearing. So normally it was about, they did that within ten days. So it was on the eleventh day. So we kind of wanted to set this up to give the person an opportunity to ask for an appeal and be able to move forward with either their, excuse me, their hearing and not be excluded from city property or city parks during that time period. Instead of going with the eleven days, we wanted to take in the old process, we wanted to take something off of Jackie's plate because it listed her as the hearings officer that needed to make this decision. Obviously she has better things to do than be a hearings officer for an exclusion from a park. So we directed it back to the municipal court as a suggestion. So with the amount of court days we have each month, this exclusion would go into effect after their court date if they were to ask for an appeal to the exclusion. But with our parks rules, an exclusion is normally given to someone if they're violating parks rules or they're committing crimes in our parks or on city property. or on city property. We don't use a lot of exclusions, but it's a nice tool for us to have to keep our parks livable, uh, for our citizens. Most of, uh, the changes, um, we made were the additions in red. There wasn't very much that we scratched out and the majority of changes were made to who listens to the hearing and when the hearing will happen and the hearings procedure. Um, and then basically at the end, it's, uh, when the person is deemed to be excluded by the judge or the court, the thirty day time period will, will, uh, begin then when, once the judgment is made. And again, in working with Emily, um, normally how we, we use these is we don't address, say we have a, someone who puts, sets up a, a camp in Meldrum Bar Park and they are homeless and they want to stay there. Well, obviously we have park hours, so they can't be there at night. So if they have a, a bunch of property from dumpster diving that they brought back to their camp, we're not addressing the camping in itself, it's a trespassing issue, so that's a, a crime. And the offensive littering, if there's just, you know, refuse all over, um, soiled items that really are more garbage than, than usable. Um, some of these folks like to stockpile things from, that they find along the way. So more so, we would be addressing the crimes to gain compliance and the exclusion would just be another tool to use to keep them from coming back into the park for thirty days.
Or prevent them from camping anytime in the future.
Yeah, we, the way that the, uh, park hours are set up, it's, it's very advantageous for us to keep campers from being there. Uh, they can't be in there an hour after sunset until an hour before sunrise. So that keeps folks from camping in there at night, uh, and it gives officers the immediate probable cause to contact them. And in some cases, when we have found folks down there, we've been able to get them, you know, over to Oregon City where they can get out of the weather and get into uh, one of the shelters or they have a backup plan, most folks have a backup plan and, on really stormy nights, you know, we, we have discretion as police officers, we choose when we're going to enforce something, so we may have them move under one of the, the bridges just to get out of the weather and stay warm for the night. Um, but this tool or the exclusion would just be, uh, it would help strengthen and, and, and keep our parks clean and, and safe for our residents.
All right, um, Counsel Alexander, any questions?
Oh, sounds good to me.
Counselor Todd?
I'm good, thank you.
Counsel Harman?
No question, thank you.
Counsel Ripley?
I have no questions.
Counsel Tracy?
No question, well, I do have a question, Chief, is Officer Day still active over in Oregon City? Do you know the gentleman that was doing a lot of the houseless outreach work?
Uh, he is, um, yeah, so he's over there still.
So he still has model, community models too, he's pushed some stuff out to other folks in other jurisdictions, okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I just know that he's a, he's a fantastic resource, I think, um, I know that other jurisdictions across the region have used him as a resource. So I wasn't sure if he'd retired yet or moved on, but.
No, you know, they're very overwhelmed over in OC. And so it's, um, so when we say, you know, we, they go over to, you know, Oregon City for the shelters, I mean, they're the ones that have the shelters, so.
All right, Counsel Garlandon?
Um, I only have a, just a comment, I wanted to make sure that this information got to the new parks board. Um, I think with all the rules that had been changed in the last couple of years, I think just kind of adding this to their binders would be really good information.
All right, Jackie, do you need anything from us on this one?
No, I think that was really good conversation and we will bring it back into ordinance. And at your next meeting, you will also have a public hearing since it is two ordinances and then you can consider adopting them.
Great, thank you very much for the, for keeping us up to date and, um, in compliance. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much for your time and I hope you guys have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, so the last thing was added, it's, um, partnership with Clackamas County regarding storm debris. And this is on here because it's time sensitive. So Counsel, Jackie Betts, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As you've all been very aware, uh, since the ice storm that Gladstone and Clackamas County in the region experienced, uh, we've been keeping you appraised of our recovery efforts. And sometimes you have time sensitive decisions that need to be made, um, that involve a contract or an agreement. Really what I'm asking for is some guidance tonight. Uh, we set up a debris drop off location at Meldrum Bar Park for the Gladstone residents to bring their clean tree and shrub removal from the recent storm. It's working out fantastically, we have a good system in place. We are incurring costs for that, which we will provide a total estimate when we have a better idea um, in regards to what the staffing is, the equipment, the grinding of the material and the hauling off of the material. Those will be city costs. We were approached by Clackamas County, um, they have unincorporated areas that they are trying to find places for, for those citizens to take their debris. They have reached out and asked if, if we would want to talk about a potential partnership. And I would like to continue those conversations to see if there's a cost effective way to bring Gladstone's costs down. So I wanted to make it clear that we would not be subsidizing anything that the county wants to do, but that we're entertaining some proposals to determine whether or not that might be a good partnership. And so I'm looking for some guidance from you to allow me to negotiate that, understanding that we don't want to increase our costs. And if we are able to come to an agreement, then we would ratify that with the city council at their March ninth meeting.
Um, Counsel Alexander, I think we're going to do kind of a consensus thing, is that what you would like?
That would be fine.
Counsel Alexander?
I think, yeah, it's a great, I mean, we actually have the space and if we can tap into their, you know, their wood chippers, their trucks, maybe, maybe let them fund most of it and just use our space, you know, if you can come to some negotiation like that, that would be great.
Fund most of it, that's the key word there.
That's what I'm saying, we have, we have the space, let them, you know, put in their resources.
Counsel Todd?
Um, I, I, I've talked with you about this, uh, Jackie, I, I totally trust you in this and I agree. We're sort of, I mean, if you drive around town, it's looking good, you, you, there's a lot of stuff getting picked up. So if we're sort of to the point where we're like, you know, we've met what we're probably going to need and they need the space, then they can pitch in with all the chipping and all that stuff, so I, I'm fine with that completely.
Counsel Harman?
Yeah, the, the same, I think if they can pay for, um, well, do you know, like, is it going to be like a percentage? Or are we going to shoot for them to pay for what, all of their services, you know, because it's just, you know, Jennings Lodge and Oak Grove, right?
So they have to provide us some cubic yard estimates. And then it depends on the quantity that we're going to have ground up and it depends on where we're going to haul it versus how much are we going to maybe supplant back into the community of the chipping materials, there's a lot of factors that play into it, but we don't want to increase Gladstone's cost because we are allowing Clackamas County to place their debris there and they're very cognizant of that. So it's got to be cost effective, um, for Gladstone because we also still don't want Gladstone residents to have to wait in a very long line now if we're allowing other people from outside the area.
Okay, totally fair, thank you.
Counsel Ripley?
Uh, my only thought was Metro wants all of our food garbage to make biofuel out of it, they take all of it. I think, I think whoever, however we get the messes cleaned up and we also need to keep in mind some older people that they've cut stuff up and left by the sidewalk because they have no way of moving it around. So keep an eye out for that kind of stuff and getting things cleaned up, it'll get us all back on the right page. So whatever works, works.
So is that a yes, go ahead Jackie, try and negotiate a heck of a deal?
Yeah, and, and I also want to let you know that we have scheduled a debrief on the storm for March twenty-third, um, which will be a public meeting because we do want to share a lot of information with you on that.
Right, Counsel Tracy?
Uh, Seemis Ray Betts, you, you, we talked a little bit about this, I think, um, you know, two things, one is the system is pretty stressed out right now and I know that Clackamas County is reaching out to Metro, to the other counties and they're looking for resources, they've got a lot of uh, property that they need to clear, um, that is up above Oregon City. I, I agree with you, I don't think we should burden our citizens who have paid for this. Um, and, you know, they're, they should be able to work out an agreement with us. Um, the other thing I'd say though is like, I, I appreciate y'all jumping on to uh, the folks that were just throwing stuff out in the street, that became kind of a hazard on a couple of streets and I know that we were having some issues with that, but I also will say, I've heard nothing but really good things, um, from all of the citizens that have, uh, taken their materials down there. I've been down there a few times when Rex was checking addresses. Um, I appreciate the flexibility of like Rex being able to make, uh, have the ability to make some of those hard decisions right there as far as somebody, whether or not they live right on the line of Gladstone, you know, Jennings Lodge or what have you. Um, so I think you've empowered staff, I think that it's, it's good, the program's great. In fact, I think we're better than probably all the cities surrounding us. Talking to Westland's folks last night, they've been struggling a little bit and I'm not laughing at the fact that they are, I just appreciate our, our crew, our directors, our city administrator doing such a fantastic job in what, you know, was not supposed to be an ice event. Um, I say go, but cautiously and we've had some con, um, conversations. You know, please do tap me if you need some estimates on costs because I've moved a lot of material and I've ground a lot of materials. So we don't want a big bill from them because of their inefficiencies, we want to keep our costs down, right? So I think go forward.
Counsel Garlandon?
So I, I completely trust you Jackie, I think that the decisions you've made so far are just right on point and, and I think it's great, but I would like to circle back around the not taking too long for our people to go dump from somebody who is down there multiple times, multiple times on Saturday. Um, I had a couple of waits that were ten minutes, but I did sit in line for almost an hour at one point. And, and don't get me wrong, I understand we were still all Gladstone residents. So if we add on to that, will our, will the people here be burdened by having to sit in a line for two hours? And by this, you know, by the same token, you don't want, this is the Gladstone line and this is everybody else, you know, because that kind of doesn't really, uh, resonate with a really good partnership. So I trust your judgment, but yes, from what I, from what I've read online and, and a couple of the things that you've passed on or what the letter you passed on, there's still a lot of stuff that we have to dump. Um, my neighbor still has two trees to go, we got a couple of the other people cleaned up, but there's still a lot of our own town that has to be cleaned up. So I just want to make sure that we're not running, you know, not, not letting that happen like it should, so.
Right.
And, and that, I, I, I think that, um, you dumping in to help Jackie, you know, with that whole cost thing, I always think it's really good to have those conversations and, and bounce ideas and that kind of thing off of each other. So thank you for stepping up for that because I have no idea.
So Counsel Garlandon, is that a yes?
I'm a yes, go, talk to people, yes.
Okay, awesome, and I'm a yes too, but my concern is the same as I think everybody else's is that we need to make sure that we're taking care of our own and not forming these partnerships that are going to, um, cut us off at the knees, basically. We need to make money, we don't need to make money, but we need to save money, but we need to take care of our own. So I'm a yes, I trust you that you'll come up with a great agreement or no agreement because we really don't need an agreement, we're doing just fine.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, well, that's it for our agenda, so I need someone to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Motion was made by Counsel Tracy and seconded in unison by Counsel Garlandon and Counsel Alexander to adjourn the meeting. Um, any questions or concerns? I don't see any, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counsel, excuse me, Counsel Harman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlandon?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
I just clicked mute, so I wouldn't be able to talk, but I'll say yes.
Thank you, Counsel Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Please.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, meeting was adjourned at eight thirty-seven PM on February twenty-third. Thank you very much, everybody, have a good evening.